All right, Jake, let's call this regular meeting to order.
We'll do it. Uh, Keisha Johnner?
Here.
Mark Ramey?
Here.
Steve McCombs?
Here.
There are motion on this morning's agenda.
Make motion to approve today's agenda.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Communications, Jake, anything?
Not to me.
Board?
Yes, I do. Um, this morning, I would like to introduce our new IT director, Drew Klosman. Drew, if you could take, go to the podium?
Yes, um, hello, everyone. I'm Drew Klosman, of course, as you said, I'm the new ITGS director. I am glad to be here, definitely learning from my fire hose, from Nicole for everything, so definitely take me a bit to get understanding of you guys' systems, but I'm glad to be here.
Thank you.
All right, well, welcome.
Yes, we are very happy to have you too. So, thank you, Drew, appreciate it. Thank you, Nicole, for bringing him out. I appreciate that.
Anything else? Steve?
No, I have none.
All right. This public comments portion of the agenda, the public can speak on items not listed on this morning's agenda, or can act on those items that could be topics for future meetings. Are there any public comment, comments on items not listed on this morning's agenda? Lisa, anything online? And seeing none in the room. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Make motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
All right, on the business item number one is Kim Dorn, Marion County Public Health.
Good morning. I just wanted to make sure that the supervisors knew and the public that, that as I am preparing for retirement, um, the Board of Health has, has done some preparation work and they have hired Lindsay as the next Public Health Director after I, after I leave, so. Um, where we are starting to make, you know, some, some, we're doing a lot of preparation, both on the Board of Health side and with staff for my departure, and so as soon as that happens, she's the one.
All right, very good.
Well, thank you, thank you, Kim.
Congratulations. Yeah. Congratulations. Very good. Uh, next, we have an extension agreement, uh, for the City of Pella, and this is, uh, City of Pella, Pella Community School District for the Prairie Ridge West Urban Renewal Area. Who's got this one?
Um, I can introduce it if you want. Uh, this has been introduced by the City of Pella. Mike Nardini is here from them. Uh, the Prairie Ridge development continues to progress. Um, it seems like if you, Lisa, if you go to the next slot screen, I think, um, in the area, uh, to the, to the west or the left, in that area, they have a couple more developments going, one being residential, um, standard operating procedure. Um, for most residential TIFs anymore is to ask for an extension of five years from the 10-year lifespan. So it would make it a 15-year, uh, lifespan of the TIF, and I believe that would be to make it more advantageous to the developer and the city to things moving forward. So that's my nutshell. If you have detail questions, I guess Mike's here, so.
Do we have detailed questions?
I actually have a few questions. Um, and Mike, if you could take, go to the podium, I appreciate it. Um, what kind of housing do, are we looking at in, in that next development? I mean, obviously, we know that Prairie Ridge went very well. You know, I have as of 10-10 that there was, there's 87 homes there, so I think there's only like a little over 90 lots, and all the lots are sold. So workforce housing, obviously, was a big hit. So, um, what are you, yeah, what are you guys looking at at that next extension?
Yeah. Supervisor Johnner, that's a very good question. For this next phase of Prairie Ridge, as Jake stated, it's just north of Highway T-15. And what the developer's proposing is roughly 90 single-family homes. It's going to be a continuation of the existing Prairie Ridge developments. It'll be very similar to the Prairie Ridge development. We believe this, um, this new housing will be also very similar in the price point as existing Prairie Ridge. The average home in Prairie Ridge, the last time I checked, was right around $306,000, which we believe fits very much in the mode of workforce housing on that as well. We believe these homes will be very similar price, and they're going to look very similar to the existing Prairie Ridge development as well. The main difference that you'll see in this new development is on the existing Prairie Ridge development, the lot widths on there were typically 50 to 55 feet in width. The new Prairie Ridge development will be a standard of 60 feet in width, and there may be a few more three-car garages out there as a result. So, but otherwise, it'll be very similar to the existing housing product in Prairie Ridge.
Okay. Um, Mike, and I appreciate you yesterday, uh, Mike and I have been in Communication. Board, if you remember, in late June, when Mike presented EPCON, uh, the, the extension there, um, I had asked about the LMI dollars, and I believe, uh, Mike had reached out to, uh, his legal counsel. And, uh, I got that information yesterday, and, um, it looks like there's still kind of some unknowns. Is that correct, Mike? Yeah. So I have, um, sent that on to legal counsel, um, our county attorney, to have him review, because it looks like there could possibly be an option, um, but he doesn't know without exploring, um, meaning when Mike spoke to legal counsel, that whether some of those LMI dollars could possibly come our direction. And Board, I just, when looking at Prairie Ridge, knowing that, um, within four years, it's pretty much full, um, obviously, now we're wanting to take a second tier and expand it from what Mike's asking from 10 to 15. I just wondered, is there any opportunity there, uh, whether maybe some of those LMI dollars could come back to the county, um, and maybe used at another place within the county? Um, I know that, uh, Jared has not had a chance to be able to review that since I just got that yesterday. So I, I personally, um, am supportive of your growth, have not a problem with that. Um, I would like to know from legal, um, council standpoint if there's any options there. And so I didn't know if, uh, how this would hold you up if we, um, the next meeting, we were, we were voting on this.
Supervisor Johnner, I think we've, you know, just been thinking about this. This development, I believe, is going to be considered by the council on December-ish, right around the first part of December.
Okay.
And so as long as, if we had action by the county in the month of November on, on this, I think we should be in good shape on this as well. And just to answer your question, the ambiguity does not, there's two options for the county. If the county was looking to spend those LMI funds or a portion of the LMI funds anywhere in Marion County to support housing in Marion County, the one method that we believe would be authorized under state code is similar to what we did with the existing Prairie Ridge development, where the county formed an urban renewal district, the city formed the same urban renewal district, and then we had a development agreement with Marion County that also identified the risk, the investments in it, and also the distribution of the LMI funds. That's still an option available in, in this, in this matter, and so we want to make sure we're perfectly clear on that. The second option is not necessarily identified, we believe, under state code, but is there a potential that there could be a redistribution of funds available? Yes, but what's not defined under state code is, if you look under state code from what we said, is the LMI dollars would have to be spent in the Pella City, City of Pella's area of operations. Area of operations is not really defined under, under the state code, and that's probably the biggest unknown right now. So with the county attorney, our legal counsel for this matter is Mr. Nathan Overberg of the Hollis Law Firm, and I believe he's worked with Marion County on economic development issues. We would ask that if he, if county attorney wanted to reach out to Nathan for that, I'm sure he'd be happy to share on, on that as well.
I guess I'd like to express to you and to the board, I'm not looking at going and doing what we did with Prairie Ridge and bonding. I'm looking at, um, with the extension, is there any opportunity there? Since you are asking the county, whether it would be a third or however it may be, um, is there opportunity there that we would have, um, some control of some LMI dollars? Mike, there may not be, and that may, you know, I just want to be able to explore that, and then if that's the answer, then, you know, okay, but it, it doesn't hurt to explore, and then we could vote, um, the November, I think it's November 12th is our next meeting, so. That's what I was hoping for. I don't know what the others are thinking, so.
Anybody have an estimate on the LMI dollars associated with this project?
Well, uh, yeah, Chairman Ramey, that's, that's an excellent question. Let me kind of back in how this is all computed, and the reason why the developer needs 15 years on this. The infrastructure to build these 90 homes is, the cost of this is roughly $4.5 million. And this is probably the biggest impediment that we see with housing in, in Marion County is just the cost of these greenfield sites on the public infrastructure. Out of that $4.5 million on the projected revenue stream, so the property taxes off the new homes over the course of 15 years, how the math works out is the city, if approved by the county and the school district and the City of Pella, the city would rebate about half of the property taxes to the developer over 15 years. The reason why it's half is of the development award. If the developer is awarded $4.5 million, we have to match Marion County's LMI percentage of the population that's below LMI, which is 33%. So roughly about a third of that, over 15 years, if the development fully builds out and we collect, and the developer gets $4.5 million of reimbursement on the streets, we would have to have a housing fund or set aside fund of roughly $1.5 million, so.
Okay. Very good, but that's over 15 years.
That is over 15 years. And I would also like to remind the board, when we consider about housing in, in this, it's also important to realize where we're at and understand the need of it, um, from an economic development standpoint. The recent Marion County Housing Assessment identified approximately 1,300 new homes which would need to be built in the Pella, Pella submarket on, for, to meet housing demand through the year 2035. Outside of the Marion County Housing Assessment, what we see on the ground level in Pella is really our, what we try, the tried and true method, but we usually evaluate this as on billable lots in our community. Now, on these new subdivisions, when we talk about greenfield sites, it takes about two years to bring a new subdivision online before they're able to sell lots. The recommended industry practice, as far as billable lots in your community, is had to have two to three years of inventory. For a community of Pella, that means somewhere between 150 to 250 billable lots on hand. As of today, we have 29. So we believe really, the housing assessment suggests there's a need for additional housing in Pella, and also what we're just seeing from a billable lot inventory is we're extremely low on billable lots right, right now, as, as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Good clarity on that. So, uh, what I'm hearing is, you've got time. Uh, Keisha wants to have this sorted out from, is there any possible sharing of the LMI dollars uh, to, from between Pella and the county, without going into the same type of agreement as we had with Prairie Ridge, uh, I guess, plot one? So Jared needs time to work that out with Nathan and see if that's a possibility.
Yeah, and I think, I think that-
Going to the next meeting, Mike, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I think we're, we're okay with additional. I think it'd be good information for the board to have as well, but also please keep in mind, it'd be our understanding there could be a potential of a contract that would be for legal counsel to see. And any type of contract, you always talk about investment, shared risk and rewards and stuff, and so that would also have to be addressed in addition to the distribution of LMI funds, but we think it'd be good information to have, and we believe we have time, so.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate that.
Let's put this on for the next meeting, and we'll postpone until then.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mike, thank you.
Thanks, Mike, appreciate it.
Board, any additional discussion on this? Steve?
No.
All right, is there a motion to close discussion?
Motion to close discussion.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
All right, we have a receive and file the weed commissioner report.
That might be me today. Phil, Phil Granadike. Yeah, weed commissioner today. Uh, Phil Granadike is the Marion County Weed Commissioner. Um, he's been doing it for several years. He, um, submitted this, uh, information, um, to me to give to you guys. He also does the annual, um, notice in the paper in the spring, works closely with, uh, the IRVM guys and Tyler out at the Secondary Road Department. Um, so he's just presenting a, um, little, uh, summary of his activity, and, um, then the report that he has to submit to State, um, Department of Agricultural and Land Stewardship, and then the certification for 25. So standard operating procedure, it sounds like he's had a fairly quiet year, maybe one ongoing complaint that he deals with over and over.
Right, okay. Board, any questions?
No.
Is there a motion to receive and file?
I make a motion to receive and file the 2024 Weed Commissioner Report.
A second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good.
Thanks, guys. We'll get that sent off.
Great, thanks, Jake. Uh, we have some appointments to the Marion County Compensation Board. Uh, these are Board of Supervisor representatives. In the prior meeting, we, the board took some action to propose a reconstituted compensation board uh, for the changes in Iowa law, and we've got two names here. So who's proposing this?
I did. Um, so I have reached out, uh, to Lyle Vander Miden and, um, Bill Shepherd. Um, they're both willing to serve as our appointments, um, upon board approval, so.
Steve?
No, I didn't make, I make a motion to approve the appointments.
Yeah, a second.
Um, can I ask for a point of clarification? I believe in the resolution, uh, you guys had Supervisor One and Supervisor Two, because we're starting the terms.
Yep.
Um, so can I, can we get clarified which one is the 25 and which one is the 27?
Yeah, the board, do, or, does either of you have any, um, because we can just appoint what we want for 25 and 27, so. Yeah, so I, I will make the motion for Lyle Vander Miden to be, um, the 27, ending in 27.
Okay, so we're gonna do it in two? We got Steve's, sorry, I don't mean to get hot up here, but, so Steve's to get the two, and then we'll do?
Yep.
Okay, so for the vote on Lyle Vander Miden and Bill Shepherd, by Steve and then second by Keisha, right?
Yep.
Okay. Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Epstein.
Okay, now you want to appoint the terms?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay, so I make the motion to appoint Lyle Vander Miden, ending in the date of 27, and, uh, Bill Shepherd, ending in 25. And that is year 2025, 2027.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Epstein.
And Johnner?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we have a site plan review for KLN Entertainment, Slideways. Missy?
So this, um, originally, we talked about this one in March of 2023. Um, at that point, it was determined that it was going to be a DNR-regulated septic, and so since that time, Logan's been working, um, with the DNR. They got, um, approval from the DNR on the septic, as I included in the packet, on September 25th of this year. So, um, because of, it had, the site plan, um, the application had expired after a year, so we started the process over. So a lot of what you're seeing is the same as what you'd seen back in March. Um, they did do some changes, so I think they did away with, uh, duck bowling. Now, it's pickleball courts along with the proposed bowling. Um, there was an amendment to the commercial survey, um, due to the layout change on the building, so that there, it's all included in one, in the, um, same, in parcel G, the same parcel. Um, there is an easement in place, um, as, as approved by the DNR for the septic, which lays in the remainder of the commercial ground owned by, um, KLM. And the reason they were not combined would be the tax, um, benefits of that 15 acres that's actually just farm ground right now. Um, so it's, it's actually taxes, ag ground, even though it's owned commercial, so things were not, after, um, a lot of discussion, those, the whole thing was not combined. By the way, so we have an 11,755 square foot, uh, proposed bowling alley, bowling alley, pickleball court with bar and bathroom expansion. And then they're also proposing a 60-by-180 maintenance shop for the carts that currently a lot of times right now, they work on outside, and again, we have the same detention calculations as required, um, that were submitted a year ago from Garden and Associates, so those are still in play, and as well as the packet for the approved septic, um, with that, um, this shows where the septic's gonna lie, um, on the approved plan from the DNR, in relationship to the building and the farm ground. They also were required to get an easement in place from the neighboring property since the septic is closer than 1,000 feet, is that correct, um, to the neighboring property, which is also in place? So they, they've completed, um, the zoning commission approved this on October 15th. They've met all the minimum standards of the Marion County Site Plan ordinance, so I think they're, at this point, um, good to move forward.
Okay. Very good. Board questions for Missy?
Yeah, um, a couple of questions. Uh, how did the board vote for your commission?
It was unanimous.
Okay. And then also, have you visited, uh, with Mr. Vanzanti about, uh, the expansion and property taxes? I mean, that's, it's going to increase, increase your property taxes. So oftentimes, I like to make sure that people know that, um, when they're building a large building like that, that the property taxes could be increased significantly, so.
How do we get an estimate on that, or is there a way?
If you stop in the office, I can show you if, if they've got that tool updated, which I think since the rollover's done, the tool's been updated, correct?
It just rolled yesterday.
So. Other than that, I don't, I don't have any questions.
Hey, Steve?
No, I have none.
Is there a motion on this site plan proposal?
Yep, I make the motion to approve KLN, uh, KL, KLN Entertainment, um, Site Plan, um, Approval.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Missy.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, now we have a receive and file of a client release letter for the American Council of Engineering. Tyler, it sounds like you.
Yeah. So, um, at the request of Calhoun Burns and Associates, who is the designer of the T-15 Flagler Bridge Project, uh, they have requested this, um, for the Flagler Bridge, uh, due to the unique nature of this bridge, uh, not necessarily in its construction, but it being a, a two-span modified standard bridge over the railroad. Um, the letter that is attached is, is a boilerplate for this, um, award application. So this is a consultant award that they would be applying for, 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 for Calhoun Burns. It does state that the project, uh, needs to be substantially completed and ready for use between such-and-such and October 31 of 2024. I just came from there. We are substantially complete. However, the ready for use, uh, not quite there yet. So, um, we're meeting with some, with the contractor for some punch list items at 1:30 this afternoon, and hope to get those squared away in the next couple of days. Um, so I don't, I guess I would recommend approval of this, however, I'd recommend a contingent approval, because, you know, because Calhoun Burns has a few days here before they need to get this application turned in, and I would say contingent on the punch list items being complete and, and the road open upon my recommendation, is what I would say, so.
So they would not send in the application until you said?
I wouldn't send them this letter.
What's that?
I, if you approve this, I wouldn't send them this.
So you would just hold the letter?
I would just hold it until I'm confident, but I guess that would be my recommendation, because you won't have a meeting between now and the end of the month when this is also due, so.
Okay, very good. Board questions for Tyler?
Nope, he answered it.
No.
All right, so Tyler is asking for an approval of this contingent upon his review of the bridge being ready for travel.
Correct.
Is there a motion?
Make that motion.
Second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Okay, very good. 24, 2024-dash-85, acquisition of a perpetual easement right-of-way. Tyler?
Yeah, so this is, this has been an ongoing discussion amongst the Road Department zoning and Two Rivers Co-op for a number of years. And actually, uh, it was initially brought to our attention, I think Steve worked on this back in 2015, actually. So it, it's been around for a while. Um, I will take the blame for kind of dropping the ball and letting it slide. Um, it, but it recently resurfaced, um, with some discussions with Two Rivers, and, uh, the original intent back in 2015 was as they acquired what used to be railroad right-of-way, portions of the railroad right-of-way were being used as public streets. So when Two Rivers acquired the railroad right-of-way, then they had those public streets platted as separate parcels, and an intent was to, for Marion County to obtain those as right-of-way or acquire those as right-of-way, for which we did not take action back in 2015 or 16. Um, don't exactly remember why I didn't, but they kind of got put to the side and we didn't do it. There was no specific reason. Since then, there's been some turnover, uh, in the management at Two Rivers. We had to get them up to speed. We went through the formal process of, uh, you know, making them an offer for purchasing the easements for Route Road Right-ofway. Um, but again, they were platted back in 2015, and, and we have a offer to donate from Two Rivers, and so this is a, would be act, would be action to formally acquire those parcels, um, from Two Rivers. So this would be a portion of Baldwin Street and a portion of Washington Street. I think they're respectively parcels F and H, as shown in the plats. Am I saying, is it Union? Uh, I'm sorry, Union, not Washington. Yeah. And through this process, uh, with Two Rivers, we, these are areas that are currently being used as public streets, and Marion County has maintained them as such when they were railroad right-of-way, and since Two Rivers acquired it. So this is really just a cleanup mechanism for us to have the road easements for those particular roads that we're utilizing. But as part of this process and through our discussions with Two Rivers, there are segments of roads that we will, we would like to consider vacating, which Brian is currently working on those, an alley and a portion of road right-of-way that we're not using, not maintaining, that would benefit the Two Rivers for future expansion, because they own everything around those particular pieces of right-of-way. So that will be coming forward to you as well in the future. So my recommendation would be to approve and acquire these easements, and then we'll go through the proper channels to formally accept and record those as such.
Board questions for Tyler?
Yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not, I take the blame there. Not sure what happened. Got busy.
Is this, then, these roads then obviously have been maintained by us, will, will continue to be maintained by us until?
Until we would vacate the easements.
Okay.
All right.
I don't have any further questions.
All right.
I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2024-dash-85.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
All right, 2024-dash-86, federal aid funding agreement for 186-place bridge replacement.
Yeah, so this is a typical, uh, federal aid funding agreement for a, uh, for use of highway bridge program funds. So this, this is not any new funding. This is the highway bridge program funding that we have for our, uh, federal aid bridges. Um, the difference in this transportation bill versus previous ones is off-system bridges do not require a match. So normally, we would have had to provided a 20% match from lo, for local dollar, from local dollars for this project. As part of the new transportation bill that we're under now, what they call off-system bridges, so it's not on a federal aid or a farm-to-market route, it's on a local road, those are 100% funded through this program, which is advantageous to us, because 20% on 1.2 million is substantial for our local budget. However, we still have the cash flow, so I will be budgeting 1.2 in our secondary road budget, and then we get reimbursed from this program like we do with all federal funding. So, uh, standard federal aid agreement, um, 100%.
Any risks to running out of money, like FEMA and everything else?
Well, I, I get that.
We're just, we're just banking on the, the full faith and credit of the United States government then, right?
Well, or in the state.
And what?
And the state of Iowa.
Well, there we go.
Because this money comes into the state and then is distributed to.
Jared, how do you feel about that? All right, any questions for Tyler?
No. I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2024-dash-86.
A second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Hi.
All right, Marion County Pledge Safety Action Plan. This is another grant program.
Yeah, so, I don't know, maybe a year ago, we we as the County Engineers Association applied for safe. Safe streets and roads for all action plan grant funding. So this was a grant for ninety-seven of the ninety-nine counties to develop safety action plans. For which the safety action plan then could be used to apply for implementation dollars, so federal safety grants and projects. As part of that program. Of developing the safety action plan, we have this, we're required to obtain this pledge from the Board of Supervisors. Later this week on Friday, we'll be meeting with, again, another requirement of this program would be to meet with. Local school districts, law enforcement, emergency services about road safety issues and incorporate feedback and discussions. From those into the safety action plan, so. But in the essence of this agenda item, this pledge is just your support of this.
If we get it, how much do we get? If we're awarded the grant, how much if we are, you know, we pledge? How much do we get?
No guarantee of any dollars. So we've received the dollars already to develop the safety action plan. We were awarded that grant and we're in the process of developing the safety action plan. Once we have the plan, then it's another process to apply for dollars. So there's no guarantee of any.
We have to go through this traffic safety plan to be eligible to apply for those future dollars, correct?
Correct, and the frustrating part here is in twenty sixteen, we developed what's called a local road safety plan, which is basically the same thing in many of those school districts and law enforcement. Probably remember having this meeting that we're going to have again on Friday. However, those plans didn't meet the new federal requirements, so we had, so everyone had to do it all over again.
Tyler, not that you guys can't, you know, pursue these things and hopefully we get something out of them. Do we ever do an analysis to how many hours we put into stuff like this that we may not be awarded any dollars?
Oh, yeah.
That we could just, that we could just put into actual, we could actually work. I just, it just seems like, you know, we get, we've got grant program after grant program after grant program. A lot of yours, we get money out of, some we don't, but we have others we get, we don't get. We put a lot of man hours, people hours, sorry, into these grant applications. Do we get money? And if we don't get money, I mean, at some point you got to analyze the time and effort that the taxpayer is spending to get nothing.
Yeah, and and I am analyzing those and you don't ever see those.
Okay.
Because if I don't feel that they're worthy, then I don't bring those forward. In this particular case, the only time I have invested to date is the two times I've presented for your approval.
Okay, so it's not a big, not a big time?
Not yet. Will I have time on Friday in a subsequent meeting as they develop the safety action plan? Yes. Then Mark, to your point, once we have the safety action plan, off the way that again, you know, is it worth even going after these safety dollars now that we have the plan? Maybe, maybe not.
Right.
Have I been able to utilize my past local road safety plan to receive funds? Yes. And I will say it did make it easier, because basically you pull a page out of that plan, here's a project, here's a particular funding source. And that made it our application very easy and the grant committee or the reviewing committee looks at that plan and says, okay, we've already. Vetted this project and kind of rubber stamped, so.
Okay, very good. Appreciate that.
Tyler, I got a quick question, just real quick. So the people that come and do this action plan, is then, is there opportunity for them to apply for grants too? Or is it just you're bringing all these people together for your information? Is there? How do you, how do you encourage people to come to all these things?
I do believe there will be other opportunities there, however. Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. I mean, there's so much safety funding out there as part of the new transportation bill. I would not doubt that there are opportunities for those other entities. But in general, this is a road safety plan that we're putting together, not. But last week I met with the District Five County Engineers and those that have had these meetings with the school districts and whatnot. They said the outcome of those meetings has been really robust and good discussion. That they were pleased with the outcome regardless of safety action plan. Just getting school districts and law enforcement and fire together was had good discussions that they ultimately believed would benefit. Road safety in general in the county or or school bus safety or whatnot.
I just wanted to give Tyler a shout out. I think, you know, obviously I talked to a lot of other chefs across the state and Tyler does a fabulous job in regards to researching this, doing this. We teamed up, there was a high five program that we did a few years back that is very similar to this. And what the high five program was is we can go out and we can work speed, we can do the enforcement side of it. There are certain aspects that we can do to try to reduce accidents or fatalities. But there's times that it's an engineering side, but if there's too big of a drop off on the lip with no gravel up along the shoulder. Or too steep of a corner or different things, that's what that high five was, and I think this is very similar to that. So I think there's a lot of good things that can come out of it in regards to those discussions. Because even with the state up on Highway one sixty-three by Pella there, we're constantly having cars go off. And they actually widened, I mean, the highway in certain areas make sure that the those road grader guys, you know, on along that edge are bringing the gravel back up. And it's it's reduced our accidents. So so things like this and Tyler is very good about keeping up on that and his staff, so I I'm appreciative of his efforts in it.
Okay, thanks, Jason. Appreciate it.
Yeah, the difference between the high five program and this is there were not. Dollars for us, but more on the enforcement side. This is kind of the reverse of that, where there's probably more dollars available for engineering and road projects and road safety improvements than on law enforcement's side. But to that point, Lieutenant Kingery and I were at a multiplayer, multidisciplinary road safety meeting last week. And, you know, we had, just the two of us, you know, at breaks, had a lot of good discussions coming out of that. And areas that we can work together on throughout the county with education and enforcement and engineering. So there's really lots going on as far as road safety right now.
Good, excellent, good discussion. Thank you, thank you. So we've got a pledge up there for the safety action plan. Is there a motion to approve the pledge?
Make motion to approve the Marion County Pledge for Safety Action Plan.
Second.
Raimi?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
All right, very good. Thank you, Tyler. We have another one?
Yeah.
Twenty-four. Dash eighty-seven.
The last ones were, I have to ask for money.
Oh, now you're asking for money from us? Oh, no, I thought these were all grant programs. I thought your old department was grant funded.
So what is before you is a twenty eighty agreement, twenty eighty project agreement with the city of Monroe for the county line road west of Highway fourteen. This was recently approved, I believe, last week by their council. You know, this is a draft agreement or. So if there are changes you'd like to make, we can definitely consider those. But this was approved by their council last week. It's a very similar project agreement to. The old Highway one sixty-three project we did with the city of Pella. Very, very similar to that. So this project was originally, the paving of this road was a joint project by City Monroe and Marion County back in two thousand and two or two thousand and four, in the early two thousands. It's it's really at the end of its useful life. So I met with the city about a month ago. We've had multiple discussions over the last year about it. And and my recommendation was to do a fold up reclamation project here, basically grinding up, chemical injection, the road that's there with new asphalt over the top. This would be the most sustainable solution and would be the easiest to accommodate the widening that they desire. They'd like to widen the road top for safety as well, and I don't disagree. So this would be very similar to a project we did down by the city of Melter, Dallas on a fifty fifty road as well. Full depth reclamation with asphalt. So this is the twenty eighty, funding the project would be fifty fifty split with about two hundred and fifty thousand per jurisdiction. My recommendation or or my request, I guess, better way to put it, would be to utilize local option sales tax, similar to what we've done on joint projects with City of Pella and. See, well, Volkswagen Trail and Old One sixty-three. I believe I provided you a table showing what my project layout is or my projected projects are for local option sales tax for in my five-year program. Putting, you know, at the completion of Junction ninety-two, you know, the funds do start to rebuild there. And so I believe there are adequate funds available in local option sales tax. I would find it very difficult to fund this out of the secondary road fund. That's going to chew up more than half of my local construction budget. Which is going to be fairly large anyway, next year, doing doing our own road projects. So I'm open to some, open to the discussion on funding the project, but my request for this as presented was two hundred and fifty. Thousand, which we would come back with a resolution in the future. So the twenty eighty is the item today, and I guess I want to just to have discussion about funding it and then a formal resolution approving that would be subsequent to this meeting.
Jared, you've looked at the twenty eighty?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I did not copy Jared.
Probably should. Just just for that I, cross that T. So doing that, well, board questions about the. The collaborative project, the cost, Tyler's proposal for local option sales tax dollars. Future local option sales tax dollars to be used, correct?
Correct, the FY twenty-six is when the city of Monroe has the project budget, right?
All right.
Right, yeah, I've looked over what you've sent for your five-year balance sheet, possibly using some local option sales tax for some of your construction. It's very clear to me that that's probably an avenue we're going to have to start looking at for the road department to be able to get some projects done. You know, I think as we see prices increasing and funding not coming in to meet those. Funding, you know, increases, whether it's rock or blacktop or whatever it may be. So, yeah, I've looked at it, I don't have a problem, but I also agree with Mark that we need to make sure legal counsel.
And there's not a. I mean, we would like to get going sooner or later on design, but there, I mean, if we want to wait to the next meeting and have Jared review, that's fine too. I mean, that's not going to be the end of the world here.
I'd recommend you do things, Tyler, with this, because you're asking for six figures out of a lot of loss. Number one, Jared, just to have your sign off on the agreement would be good. Number two, when we look at projected local option sales tax dollars into that fiscal year. Says we're going forward here, we just need to be sure that. You know, how much are we collecting? What, do we have any projections to show us what that might look like on a total dollar basis? And what the impact to overall loss funds will be? Yeah, because if, what I'm saying is if we commit two fifty now, and I'm going to abstain from the vote because I won't be here. So those two will have to approve it, but if you commit that, you're locked in. So you could have taken maybe a quarter of your lost money and said that's what you're going to use it for. If you get a million dollars, if you get a million two, Jake, what's been our average collection?
That, it's usable to us. We are just starting to experience not having the LEC payment. And honestly, I'm not that fresh with local options.
Yeah, but it's about a million, two that we collect on an annualized basis, so I'm just saying.
Say it's like eight hundred into the project fund.
Project.
Yeah, so we just need to make sure that the other departments are aware that we're going to lock up two fifty now. And do they have stuff they're thinking about that? Because that's fairly material, right?
Yeah, and I don't think we, in our projections, we weren't projecting growth, like zero percent growth in that lost revenue. But we weren't projecting a decline, which could very likely happen too, so.
I'm not sure what current collections are doing.
It just might be a good thing just to make people aware, think through it.
Yeah.
And then we get the sign off from Jared, put it on the next meeting, everybody can do what they're going to do.
In that spreadsheet I sent with my projection, there are two projects in FY, two road department projects funding local roads. The other is, it's likely to get delayed into FY twenty-six also.
What's the length of this project?
Oh, it's just over a half a mile.
How many residents live on the Marion County side of that?
That utilize the road or actually live off?
Actually live on the south side.
One, one, yeah, not, not very many. They're right off Highway fourteen.
It's west of fourteen.
West of fourteen, yeah. There, there are, you know, off the end of the pavement, there is a, an area of Marion County that's only accessible via this road.
Okay.
Gravel, roads within Marion County.
Right.
But no, as far as directly adjacent, there's very few homes with direct access to this pavement. Still is our jurisdiction.
Right.
Half of it.
Okay, any other questions for Tyler at this? Steve?
No.
All right, so we'll put this on the next agenda, Jake. Good time for Jared to review, think through the the dollars being requested. Is there a motion to close discussion?
Make motion to close discussion.
Second. John?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi, very good. Tyler, thank you.
Thank you.
Updates, Steve?
I have a heard a meeting Thursday and then the safety thing Friday.
Very good. Keisha?
Friday is quarterly economic development meeting, I plan to attend and I have impact next Tuesday.
All right, nothing for me. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
John?
Hi.